Good evening and welcome to a joint meeting of the Ashland Board of Selectmen and the Ashland Planning Board. I call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order.
And I call the Planning Board meeting to order.
We are here to get a presentation on complete streets. Complete streets is a policy that we are looking at doing. It would be a joint decision by these two boards, but I'm going to hand it over. We need you to come to the microphone, though.
Oh.
Let's put this one here.
Put that next one.
Introduce yourself so people can hear you and you can take a story.
All right, I'm Chris Kuschel. Is the sound okay?
Yep.
Okay. So thanks for having me. So what I was going to do tonight is speak for a little bit about what complete streets are, give a little bit of an overview. Some of you might be familiar with it, but I just find it's helpful to have us all sort of on the same page. Then I will be discussing the state certification program, which provides funding to certified communities. And then talk a little bit, one of the criteria for this program is to have a local policy. So I'll talk a little bit about what the local policy is and then just open it up for questions.
Chris, before you get started, your, what organization are you from?
I'm with MAPC, the Regional Planning Agency.
Thank you.
Yep. So as you can see, there's sort of a, there's a number of different sort of definitions. And this is one that I just brought out. Roadways that are safe, comfortable, and accessible for users of all ages, abilities, and income, regardless of how one travels. So it's a very sort of simple, broad definition, but there's a lot of it that's packed into this definition of what a complete street is. So when you think about sort of what all users mean, there's sort of this emphasis built in, thinking about the needs of the elderly, the needs of children, the needs of disabled people, and thinking about how they get around. When we talk about income, and maybe in Ashland this isn't as much of a concern, but it's actually, there are a lot of people within the MAPC region, that's sort of within the 495 belt for the most part, who actually don't have access to a vehicle. Some of that's by choice. If you live in Cambridge, maybe some people choose not to have a car, but a lot of people actually can't afford them or for other reasons. So 200,000 households within this region, so it's a large number. And then when we talk about the all forms of travel, so sort of the traditional, or I guess the newer way that we've been thinking for the past 50 years or so about our roadways is they're for cars or for vehicles. And then maybe a little bit, we think about maybe if there's time, we think about the needs of a pedestrian. And so the idea of a complete street is from the outset, let's try and think about all the needs of all these various types of users, regardless of how one is choosing or able to travel. So in terms of what are the benefits, why would you want to do this? There's several, the whole sort of concept was created actually from the public health side of things. The idea being that this is a way to combat sort of obesity and other issues related to lack of physical activity. So if you, for example, the, I think the recommended physical minimum is 20 minutes of exercise a day. So that's if you walk to the store a half a mile there and back, that would actually be your physical minimum, which lots of people don't have. So the idea is if you make it easier, people can actually sort of incrementally improve their health. A lot of the sort of research that I've seen has shown that really maybe more impactful is this increase in safety related to conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians and bikes. It also provides additional options, as I mentioned before, for seniors and children and others who aren't able to travel by vehicle. And in downtown areas, there's several case studies that I've seen that show that downtowns or sort of village areas that undergo sort of a complete streets makeover have a really positive economic impact on a number of different measures. So I'd like to talk a little bit about what complete streets are not. And I have a friend who's really believes that Bigfoot is not a myth, so he doesn't like the fact that I use this slide, but I find it's helpful.
You can put on the slack.
So one of the myths is that complete streets are only for cities. And certainly places like Cambridge and Somerville apply complete streets all of the time. But really, one of the important aspects of complete streets, and I think one of the reasons it's so relative in our region, is that they're intended to be context sensitive. And so what a complete street looks like in Somerville is probably not going to be the same in a lot of cases as what it would be like in Ashland, for example. It's not a design prescription. So there's not any sort of checklist that every complete street needs to have, you know, X, Y, and Z. It really is going to depend on a case-by-case basis. And part of it is what you actually, you know, can fit on a roadway, what makes sense. So there's, it's, it's really a set of principles to think about. It's not sort of some conspiracy to get rid of cars. Obviously, they're not going anywhere. So it's really the way that I conceptualize it. It's much more about providing choices. And finally, it's not a silver bullet. So other aspects related to sort of making a sort of walkable vital area, like your land use mix, your urban design, all of that matters as well. It's just sort of one element to contribute to that. So I have a few pictures just to show some examples of what a complete street could be. On the left, you can see this is an example on a city street, what it would look like with the bike lanes and the crosswalks and the sidewalks on both sides. Whereas on a rural road, it could just be a very wide shoulder. And that, in that situation, can certainly be considered a complete street. Within a community, if you're in sort of your downtown area, even if it's a small town, again, what that complete street might look like could be different in your residential area, where again, just maybe a sidewalk and that's really all you need to consider that a complete street. And here's a few pictures to give some examples of what probably are not complete streets. And you can see in this look situation, there's obviously a demand for people to cross the street and they have no real safe way to do that. There's also no sidewalks on either side of the street from what I can tell, so it's just not a very safe situation. Looking even closer, another example, when somebody's in a wheelchair and there's no adequate cur, or no curb cut at all is another thing to think about. So when we think about complete streets, you're sometimes thinking about on the macro scale and sometimes just the very like little details that help people get around. And then one final example, again, people walking on this six-lane road or whatever this is. So I guess I'm doing questions at the end for when I say, okay. So that's basically a quick overview of what complete streets are. And I'm happy to talk more about sort of what specific elements could be included if people are wondering about that. But I wanted to turn a little bit now to talk about what the state legislation is. It used to be called active streets and it was changed at the last minute to the complete street certification program. It's modeled after the Green Communities Act, which I believe Ashland is, okay. So it's, I think it will be run fairly similar to that. Communities will become certified and certified communities will have access to funding. There is $20 million, $5 million a year that will be made available that has been announced to certified communities to plan and implement complete streets. To become a certified community, there's five sort of criteria. The biggest lift, I think, is the one to adopt a local policy. A local policy can be, does not need to be a bylaw. It can be something that is adopted by the Board of Selectmen for towns or city council in, in cities. So that's acceptable. And that's generally what the communities I've been working with have been doing. I think Somerville and Holyoke are the two communities that have an ordinance as opposed to sort of a resolution or city council adopted policy. The other criteria, confirming your baseline inventory, is actually quite simple. I think really Mastodot just wants to meet with the community, whether it's the planning and DPW, just to say, this is what we have for your sidewalks and bike lanes, et cetera. Are we missing anything? Is anything else planned that we should know about? Numbers three and four have to do with just the procedures. So how the DPW runs things in terms of the routine work. And then for your other things, whether subdivisions of site plan review, assuming there are established procedures for that as well. The final one, I think, the mode share goal is the trickiest. And it's still unclear exactly how that's going to be defined. We've been sort of pushing Mastodot quite hard to think about the fact that in a lot of our communities, if you, a lot of people have to drive to work, for example. So the traditional way to think about mode share is having people go, changing commute patterns. But we're hoping to have them have some broader way of defining that. So it could be if you're looking, counting for one day at your downtown, how many people walk, and then have some sort of intervention. And look, five years later, are there more people walking? So right now Mastodot is working with a number of stakeholders. They have hired, I think it's VHB, to actually flesh out the policy. The policy is only about a two-page piece of paper. So they're now trying to flesh out what these five criteria will be, will look like. And it's expected that they were hoping to start accepting applications in the spring and doling out money in the summer of 2015, so fairly quickly. There are right now approximately, I think, 15 or 16 communities across the state that have policies. So again, like I said, probably the biggest lift. I'm working with two or three other communities right now. But I would say that in general, the early years of the program are probably when you have a better chance of capturing more money before more communities become certified. So as I mentioned, talking about the local policy. So we've been working at MAPC for since probably, I guess, August of 2013 with, on helping communities adopt complete streets policies. And this was actually before the, the state legislation was even announced. Maynard was the first one in the state to adopt a policy that we worked with, followed by Littleton, which was in December. And so if people are familiar with Smart Growth America, they have, one of their divisions is the National Complete Streets Coalition. And they compile and rank all the complete streets policies adopted around the country. And they named Littleton's policy that we had written for them as the number one policy in the country for the year of 2013. That was among more than 80 policies. So having had that in December, since then, we've basically been using Littleton's policy as the base and just sort of tailoring that to each community that we've been working with. The 2014 rankings are not announced. I do know them, so I can't say what they are, but I can say that Massachusetts will be well represented in the top 10 as well, again. So I don't necessarily need to go through all of these elements. They're there and I'm happy to talk about them. I think a couple of the key points, these are sort of, this is essentially the rubric that National Complete Streets Coalition uses to think about what makes a good policy. And sort of the interesting thing is, I wasn't, we weren't thinking about this when we wrote Littleton's policy, it just sort of happened to be that it hit all of the spots. So I think one of the important things to think about is that when we think about complete streets and adopting them or actually implementing it, the opportunities are at all types of projects. So on the one hand, it's the DPW for their routine maintenance. That's a time when they can look at a roadway and think, okay, is this an opportunity to, let's say, for example, stripe a bike lane? Or are there opportunities to build sidewalks using their existing funding? And that goes from there, from the routine, as well as thinking about the larger projects. So thinking about your subdivision regulations, the site plan review, And that goes from there, from the routine, as well as thinking about the larger projects. So thinking about your subdivision regulations, the site plan review, these are opportunities to update the regulations to make them more reflective of complete streets policies. Um, the other sort of, I think, important piece is number seven. Um, Boston has created their own really slick design guidelines for complete streets, but what we've been telling basically every other community is, it's, it's really not necessary because there are lots of resources out there, and so the policies that we write include the appropriate resources that the DPW or whomever is the planning would, um, consult for, um, implementing complete streets. Um, and then I think the final two pieces that, just to highlight, one, number nine, having performance measures. So thinking about ways just to track whether you're actually having implementation. So it could be tracking the, um, miles of bike lanes that are striped in a year, or, um, number of new crosswalks that are restripped, or whatever the case may be. Um, and the final one is our policies. We, we really try to have very specific implementation steps, and so often what that means is we typically try to create some sort of group or have a group that already exists that's sort of pointed, um, and charged with carrying out the policy. So I think I did that in fifteen minutes. Um, there's my contact info, um, in case I didn't cover anything. Um, Nick Downing is my colleague. He works more on the state legislation side, so you can feel free to contact him about the state legislation and stuff, um, side of things as well.
Okay, can you also email the, um, presentation so that
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Because one of our members isn't here, so I want to be able to get it to him.
Absolutely, sure.
Okay. Questions? We'll start on the planning board's side?
I have a question if, uh,
Okay, start.
Um, ju, one of the things on the, um, the customization, you talked about, uh, having a design based on, like, you know, one for residential area versus, uh, commercial district. So it's not a cookie cutter, um, type, design. Does, do you get any more granular, like, like within a residential neighborhood? Do you, is there one design for like that neighborhood, or is it, does it get as low as, you know, this street could be customized for this and this street could be customized?
So in the policy document itself, it's much higher level, and it's much more about the principles and saying, you know, these are the resources to help you figure it out. Um, on the ground, I think it would depend. So for example, if you have a, I don't know, F-five house, um, subdivision going in, that's really, really quiet, maybe you wouldn't need that much, whereas if you have a larger residential development coming in, that would require more types of complete streets amenities. Um, so I, I think it will depend, and I think that's where the, the guidance documents, um, would be most, um, appropriate.
Next.
Preston?
Preston, if you?
Um, how large of a policy are most towns looking at for this? Is it a, a one page, a ten page, a hundred page?
They are generally, let's say averages three pages, three to four pages.
Okay, so that gives some sense of the scale of, of the detail in there.
Yes, sure.
And, uh, would part of the policy be that if somebody's coming in with a large housing pol, uh, project, that they'd then be required to upgrade, say, the street that they're, uh, connecting to?
Well, so if it's, this policy, especially because it would not be a bylaw most likely, um, it can't not supersede sort of what your site plan regulations are, and so generally what we write in the policy is that one of the implementation steps is to look at your subdivision, your site plan review, and that would be something that would probably be an incremental type of thing because it can't happen instantaneously. But I, I don't think the policy can sort of necessarily require things that would be in conflict with, uh, other types of regulations in the town, is my understanding.
So I was gonna ask something similar, if the other communities have adopted it into their physical bylaws, um, that you've seen thus far?
Um,
Kind of?
Yeah, not yet. Like, as, um, Somerville has it in their ordinance, um, and Holyoke does as well, although their ordinances are actually more general than what these policies are in terms of implementation, so.
Then, my other question was more, is there, y, y, you sign up for the policy, it seems pretty straightforward. Is there any sort of minimum requirement to, to maintain a a classification of complete streets town, or is it kind of just up to the town to implement as no minimum, you know, requirement or timeframe?
Um, and, I'm not quite following the
I guess, is it just, you sign up for it and we're a complete streets community?
Oh, for the, for the state
That we have, or is there, you know, in two thousand fifteen, we have to stripe two miles or?
S, so related to the state legislation side of becoming a certified community?
Yes.
Um, there is, I know Mast Dot is requiring some sort of progress reports annually. Um, I don't think that they, and this is what they're still figuring out, but I don't think that they will be saying, like, you need to have, being so specific of having like X, you need to have this, this. I think it'll be more based upon what the goal that the town sets and how are you moving towards reaching that goal, is my understanding.
So what is, so I'm sorry, I know I already asked you. That made me think, um, well, as far as you were talking ear, ear, earlier about, you know, Littleton was number one, that's used as a model now, and in Massachusetts, it's gonna be rather represented. So there must be a set of criteria that they use to, to, um, make that, this, you know, those decisions.
Yep, and the criteria is essentially this. So they have this, and they create a rubric out of this and assign a certain number of points based upon how you do hitting on all those, t, each of those ten elements.
Okay, and the, and the policy, okay.
Yep.
John, did you have any questions?
Uh, no, I know, I heard this before, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Yet again. Yeah, we're, we're doing comments later and everything.
Yeah, yeah.
So I wanna, I wanna speak a little bit about the policy versus bylaw approach. As you said, two communities went after the bylaw. Obviously, a policy is great, but it can always be waived. It doesn't hold really weight. Um, you know, anybody can set a policy, but then a vote can change a policy, and so I'm curious, you know, a, and obviously the beginning of this is like CPA when it started, you go for the money. You know, the faster you sign up, the faster you get in there, the better shot you get to get money, and the more things you're able to produce. And, you know, then subsequent years, that probably falls off a little bit. Um, have you heard anything around, you know, if a town adopts it as a bylaw, obviously it's a much more serious approach to it. And do you, do you think that might hold more weight in really trying to get the dollars in the future?
In terms of the money, as of now, they have, are not, Mast Dot's not making a distinction between a bylaw versus a policy. Um, I can't say whether that would change in the future.
I mean, logic would say that it probably will. I mean, because anyone, again, you can, anyone can put a policy in place, and anyone can change a policy with a vote, you know? Or a bylaw. I mean, that's, I think, Mike's point was looking towards, in your policy, implementation of a bylaw within a period of time, which creates benchmarks and then subsequent
Mm-hmm.
Performance and success.
And what I would offer is, in the end, what Mast Dot wants to see is sort of implementation. They want to make this sort of a part of a routine. So some places, for example, Cambridge, they don't even have a bylaw or even a policy. They've just done it. So I think this is one sort of avenue or some, one approach to help cities and towns sort of make things routine. And I think once it starts becoming routine, you almost don't need a policy or a bylaw regardless, because it's just going to be the way things are done.
And I, I think, Paul, when, when I brought this to, you know, town manager, town planner, and, and John, for us to start having this discussion, we had had that debate as well. Do we go for the bylaw, or do we go for the policy? And we felt that we take the first step of going for the policy because that's a vote of the Board of Selectmen, you know, and we would look for the support of the planning board because they would be the ones working with the policy when the developers come in. But if we really feel that it's something that is going to be the, in the best interest of the town, then we could possibly look at putting it into a bylaw. But put the policy in place first to be part of this possible first round of getting some funding, even if it's a small amount.
And I don't disagree with that, and I understood that. And to Mike's point, do we include the policy a target of implementation of a bylaw? And I think
Right.
I gotta believe that will hold some weight when the dollars, I mean, as a lot more communities come on board, five million dollars gets really thin.
Yes.
You know, I mean, right now, it's, it, you, we could see a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, whatever the hopeful goal is, but as that turns into fifty thousand or whatever, it gets really thin. And I know somewhat like with our water restrictions years ago, when we had to implement the new bylaw changes, and the first year we did it, we used what the state told us because we had a water withdrawal permit, we had to get it done, but the next year we went in and made it a little bit stronger. And they were incredibly supportive of that action because we took the next level and strengthened it the next year. And that's the kind of the point I'm getting to. Is logic would s, say, in, 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 in history with the state would be that, you know, when you take it seriously, they tend to make you a stronger player in that game. So I, I know there's no real answer, but I'm just wondering if you've heard any rumblings or things like that.
And one thing that, if the town moves forward with the policy, it could absolutely, absolutely be one of the steps is, one of the implementation steps is exploring.
The green communities works that way. You know, you start out, and then you hit benchmarks, and you keep going. And you, each year, you have to put more and more in. And the more you do, you know, the, you keep getting the money. So that's, that's why I'm kind of bringing that up, that, that approach.
Steve?
So I was actually gonna talk a little bit about the money and also about green communities as well, because, uh, there was, you related it to a similar program as Greens Communities. There's a, a series of criteria that the town had to meet. They had to hit each of those before we were designated a green community. And I don't get that same sense here, whether there's a baseline that's created, uh, or if that's part of it, if I'm, if I, I misheard or or misinformed, but is there a baseline that gets established? Is that part of the process? Is there a, uh,
So the
Is there an expectation for the use of the grant? Uh, i, i, is there some? Am I off track on this?
Well, I'm not, um, actually any familiar with green communities. I've just been told it's been modeled on that, so I, I can't speak in terms of a direct comparison. Um, one of the things is to confirm the baseline inventory that is there today. Um, and that's the, the second, I guess, number two on the eligibility criteria.
So who does that?
That would be, um, it would be a meeting between Mast Dot and the planning and probably DPW of the town, who would meet together to establish what the baseline is.
And that, is that, w, w, what part of the process that, does that occur in? Is that?
That would be, um, I, from my understanding is, that is one of the criteria to become, um, a certified community. So that would be done at the beginning.
All right. And the other thing, um, just listening to your presentation and then having had a presentation last night from our, uh, Rail Trail Committee, uh, there seems to be, and that, maybe you can, uh, weigh in on this as well, there seems to be some connection between possibly uh, employing this program with our Trails program as well. It seems that we may, in the future, be challenged, or one of the challenges we're facing is just connecting all the dots as we, we work our trail through, through the community. And this might be a, a way to incorporate both into this program.
So I know Acton, for example, um, they have their, um, trail as well, and one of their, they wanted to make sure that their policy sort of reflected that one of their key connections is m, making the on-road connections to the trail. And I think they might have two trails, and how do you get to the two trails through town and connect that way? Um, so I think that's another thing that could certainly be, um, part of the policy. Um, in terms of the state legislation, I don't believe that the funding can be used for off-road trails. I think it needs to be on-road facilities.
Uh, Chris, you know, there are a couple initiatives in town, you know, so there's, there's the, um, the Upper Charles Initiative to, you know, for, for a greenway. Um, there are Safe Routes to School. I think we have a representative in the Safe Routes to School Committee here. Um, and then there's also a, um, revitalization initiative on Route one twenty-six, Pond Street. We're working very closely with Mast Dot with that. So my assumption that all of these things coming together would, would create a momentum. Would, would that grab Mast Dot's attention a little bit?
I, I, it's, it sounds fair enough to say.
Sounds fair enough to say, okay.
I can't speak for Mast Dot.
But, but it would seem to dovetail with that.
Yes, I agree.
Any other questions? Okay. Um, wanna open it up, see if there's any people in the audience who have questions? If there's anyone in the public who's here that has any questions, just come to the microphone and identify yourself and.
Hi, Leah Marshquist, twelve West Road. I'm mostly coming here to, to, uh, show my support and enthusiasm. Um, this is what, this kind of program is what makes me really proud to live in Massachusetts. Um, I'm from Connecticut, and, um, my husband's from Vermont, and we lived in Rhode Island a long time. And then we moved here, and there's just this incredible momentum to make our communities more sustainable, um, and more accessible to all types of people. I really liked what you said about, um, how we would, this program would be reimagining the streets, make it accessible of, of all different income levels, all different abilities, and all different age groups. I'm a teacher in the, the town, and I teach at the high school. Year after year, I am surprised by how many students live near the high school and are unable to walk to it. They want to. They want to, but it's not safe. Uh, Higley Road, really close. It's just too dangerous. It's too windy. And if you continue into Framingham on Higley Road until it turns to Fay Road, there's a sidewalk. Wouldn't it be nice if we connected it? Then that wouldn't take that much. Um, I live a quarter mile from the high school, and even so, the sidewalk doesn't even make it to my street. And, um, uh, Cedar Street really should be included with it. Um, so I'm coming as a, a teacher, knowing the need from students, but I'm also coming as a parent because my son is going to start kindergarten next year. What's interesting is I'm gonna have to pay for, um, a bus. I don't really mind that much. My son's really excited about it. But it's interesting, I live within a mile from the school, so then I have to pay. That to me suggests that there's infrastructure for me to walk or bike my son to the Warren School. There isn't. Uh, there is no way I can ride my bike or walk on Cedar Street all the way to Warren School. And so that's something as a parent that makes me feel a little, like, that's not quite fair. Like, there's this expectation, and, you know, it feels a little punitive. I know that's not the design of it, but something I noticed, and we might want to consider that when we're talking about charging for buses. Um, uh, I also, um, I'm really enthusiastic about bike, uh, infrastructure and walking infrastructure, and it's interesting, a lot of people don't understand the need for it. So I brought this comic, which illustrates it beautifully. Um, what you see here, there's a train track with a train on it and a road with cars on it. But the road suddenly drops off, and then the cars are forced to get onto the train. I mean, I'm sorry, the train track. And it says, "Damn, the road lane ends again." I hate sharing the tracks with the train. And, uh, this is by, uh, Steve Patrick Adams. You can go to stevepatrickadams.com to see it. Um, and I think this beautifully illustrates a problem, because when you are using the little bit of infrastructure, the infrastructure that's there, and it drops off, you create a problem. And people don't understand, well, why can't you use, well, why can't bike, bicyclists just use the road? Why can't walkers just use the road? But at the same time, what do we say to people? We say, "The roads are for cars. Get off the road, get out of my way. Oh, those, those pedestrians, ah." And it's just, it's, you know, double standard. So anyway, apply your efforts. I really hope you adopt this. I'm so excited. I know my students are excited, so, um, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
What a segue.
Perfect segue.
I have some information about Safe Roots to School, which you probably are aware of. My name is Susan Polacksky, and I'm an Ashland resident, but I'm here representing Safe Roots to School, which is an arm of Mast Dot also, and it really seems to be kind of bringing this down to the micro level of the schools. We're a committee that has been formed over the last year. We started with the Safe Roots to School program last spring, so we're coming up on our year anniversary, which is key for funding for Safe Roots to School also. While it does focus on the school and a, and a certain, um, mileage around the school, it really looks at the community as a whole, as this does, and says, how do we get our children to school safely without, you know, a bus or, um, cars? And we're specifically looking at the Mindes School because if, if we were able to get some funding for construction projects around the Mindes, it really ties in with the downtown, which is what Mast Dot likes also in terms of bringing the whole community involved. Um, what we've done over the last year is really taken what's going on in the schools and, and letting the community know about it. The Mindes, I go back to the Mindes, wonderful, wonderful school in terms of as all of the schools are, but that's a great age, that third, fourth, and fifth grade, to, the kids are excited about walking, they're excited about physical activity. They do, you know, the marathon and the mud run and the Halloween, the spooky run and all that. They already do a walk to school day where they actually bring the buses right into downtown and let the kids out, and, and they walk to school. We're looking to expand that this year to, it, it, we have a few police officers on our task force, and that really does a number on the downtown traffic. We're trying to find a site that's a little further that will allow the children to walk a little further and, and not really mess up the traffic downtown. But they, um, Mast Dot, under Safe Roots to School, will do a, what they call a dot map, where they will see where the children are in a mile radius, I believe it is, around the school, and focus their efforts on, okay, how do we get these children that are in that area to walk or bike or skateboard, um, to school? Maybe if it's not even on a, on a daily basis, but if the snow ever goes and the spring ever comes, you know, just doing a, a, a day where it, it is a walk to school day, a legitimate walk to school day to the schools. They also have another program that they call a walking school bus, which is your children children come, it's a parent volunteer, and they are the bus driver, if you will, and they stop at this intersection, and kids from that street come walk with them, and it's there at a certain time, and they know that it's gonna be there at, you know, whatever, seven thirty, quarter of eight, and they pick up children as they go along and, you know, kind of drop them at the school. So they really, really have been a great resource for us. They do something as simple as stickers and, you know, just to get the kids excited. Last year, for the first time, you know, you mentioned the Warren, which I drive by every day, and it's always been an issue, we did a pedestrian safety for the children at the Warren last year, the second grade. So going up to the Mindes, they have a little bit of training, and we would, again, looking at these snowbanks, we do it with two children and one parent, and two children, and we put a child on the other side of an SUV and say, "Raise your hand," and the child on the other side can't see him. Well, they don't understand that, the kids, when they're walking, that, oh, wow, he's on the other side of that SUV, and, you know, if he were to run out into the street, you know, he being himself, you know, wouldn't be seen. So they're fabulous to work with, with training, they're fabulous to work with, with ideas. They also have funding, once you've been involved for a year. They, very similar to this, as you said, if you signed on with them five years ago, if you go onto their website, amazing construction projects around schools. They're in the process, this year, of looking at what they have for money and changing their distribution policy in that they will probably now do more smaller projects. Something as simple as, you know, looking at the Mindes, again, I say the Mindes, but looking at school and seeing what the sidewalk is like, and making recommendations. They told the story of a town that, when the kids got out of school in June, they did all their crosswalks. They striped all their crosswalks, and, well, had they waited two months, you know, it just made much more sense to stripe, but they happened to have the manpower at that time, and that's when it was good for the town, but it wasn't necessarily what was great for the kids. So we just wanted to let you know that we exist, and we're always looking for new members. And we've got, you know, school committee people, Nat's been on it, a couple policemen. It really is great, and it's really gaining some steam, and this is fabulous. And as you said, you know, for us to go to Safe Roots and say, "Oh, we're a Complete Streets community," and for you to go to Complete Streets and say, "Oh, well, you know, we've been a Safe Roots community for over a year," it's all MassDOT, and it all ties nicely together. So, thank you.
Okay, here we go.
I thought we had a promise.
I think we're all, yeah.
I was trying to lull you into a sense of overconfidence. Joel Arbaitman, Chair of the Ashland Upper Charles Trail Committee and Founder of the Ashland Bike Club. First, I want to thank you, Olanda, because I really know that you were the driving force behind this, and I, this is really something that we need to do. Even if we start small, we need to start. I had a couple of comments, and I actually had said the same thing at Chris's last presentation that I want to reiterate here. I would love to see Ashland take a holistic approach to this. And what do I mean by that? There's sort of this hardware kind of focus here. If you build it, they will come. Good things will happen. We'll have bike lanes, and kids will be walking to school, and everything will be wonderful. Well, it takes more than just spray painting stuff on roads and building sidewalks. That's a great, that has, that's one of the requirements. You have to do that. But at the same time, it doesn't have to be, let's get that done, and then we can figure out what to do with it. We should be looking at things like promoting health. Some town out west, some mayor who weighed about, like, eight hundred pounds or something, said, "Let's put this community on a diet, and let's, everybody could log their own weight privately. You don't have to, nobody has to disclose anything." And you record how much weight you've lost, and we try to encourage the whole town to get out and report in, or however it works, you know, into a collective thing. And you build community. You actually try to get people to be either biking or walking, and seniors getting out. How many times did you get out this month? So you try to start a health program, the health being the focus of it. If you just put stuff out there, you know, how many people would stop commuting if you had bike lanes? Maybe some, but I think it takes some promotion. There's gotta be, there's gotta be kind of a public awareness side of it, and we could do that. The second part of it is that, I'll just give you an example, a couple of quick examples with regard to safety. I'm gonna focus really on bicycling here. It is appalling. Drivers, and I'm gonna give you an example to see whether you guys would know this, but people do not know the laws about driving when they pass a bicycle rider in the street. They don't know the laws. So if I asked, nobody answered, because I'm sure one or two might know. You know, what is the minimum distance you have to allow when you pass a bicycle rider in Massachusetts? And people might guess it, whatever, X feet, three feet, four feet. The answer is a safe distance. There is no number, okay? But people don't know what that is, okay? And the second part of it is that almost no one knows. I've asked a lot of very experienced bicyclists about this. The law in Massachusetts requires drivers to slow down, not to go slowly, but to go slower than they were going when they pass a bicycle rider on the road. And nobody knows that. I mean, just nobody. The last piece I wanted to say about the zoning, you know, we start, we're doing this on 126. We're gonna stripe bike lanes. We're putting bike lanes here, and everybody's, this is a real popular thing. This is really cut on. Everybody wants to have bike lanes on the nice wide streets. Why not? Let's make it easier for people. But you also have to look at the number of curb cuts on these roads. If you, if you're, and appropriately, if you're trying to promote more commerce and have curb cuts and stuff like that, you've got to figure out how to make these things work together. If you just put bike lanes and then you put seven hundred curb cuts in a mile, you're really giving those poor bike riders a hard time. You've got people cutting in, turning left, turning right, coming in and out, you know, and it makes it a very difficult thing. So it is, I think we need to take a very holistic view of this, is the point, and not only comply with doing what we have to do to get funding here. We should be doing this to make our community healthier and safer and make our bylaws and our policies, you know, work with the whole program. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from anyone on either of the boards?
This looks like a great program, as with several other people here. I've heard about this before. Obviously, you know, if there's money on the table, we should do what we need to do in order to get it, and then we can use that money for, if nothing else, you know, more sidewalks. But as others have said, we also can use this as an opportunity to really think about how we're designing our community to, you know, go a step farther and be a more livable, active community. And I think that's a good thing to do also. So I think this is a great thing. I think we've got community support for this at this time. It's all just coming together, and it's the fact there's state money on the table as well. Obviously, we should do this.
So what if we go one by one? Ultimately, what we're trying to get to on the planning board side is to see if tonight makes sense to get a motion supporting, pursuing the adoption.
Creation of a policy, yeah.
Yeah, creation of a policy of the Complete Streets. So maybe one by one, I've, we got Preston's, it sounds like he's for it.
Yes.
If you have pros, cons, and then ultimately what your feelings are on the adoption of a policy like this. Herman?
I think it's a good policy. I think, you know, when Preston was just saying, making it a community, that, I don't remember the exact words, but, you know, I was thinking that, yeah, I mean, that would be something I'd be more attracted to as a citizen, just having a, when I think about a community with complete streets like that, it would be something that'd be much more attractive to me than what we have today. So, I mean, I definitely feel positive about this, and I think it's something we should definitely move on.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I think it's progressive, necessary, logical. I hope we don't stop at a minimum investment. I think it's something that is probably overdue, and I'm in support of moving forward and drafting something.
Okay.
I had some notes as far as, like, pros and cons. I was gonna try to lay it out there, because I'm sure it'll come up at some point if we get to the point where we're doing a bylaw. Pros, I felt, along with a lot of you, overall awareness of the streets in general is probably a very good thing for the town. I haven't heard a lot of great things about our streets. I've heard great things about plowing, but as far as the overall maintenance, regardless of how good of a job the DPW's done, they're constrained. They could probably tell you right now which ones need work, but the budget for it's always challenging. So I think anything that brings the awareness in, there's a good thing. Planning for better roads and infrastructure as a whole, I think, is a really good thing for the town, being in front of this, and then being able to really go after what we want, we want it to look like. I was originally pushing back on her at the first meeting, and I was saying, so, I went right after the things you guys are pointing out, if we don't really incorporate this in our bylaws, how will anything change, was kind of my mentality. So I didn't want to have more busyness, if you want to call it that, like, more activities and busyness and things that we've approved that conflict with other things, but have no real plan to continue to push. But then when we started vetting the steps it would take to get that, and how long it would take to actually have that happen, we could be looking at a couple of years before this is in place. And this would be a good mezzanine step that shows support. I think it would give us opportunities to talk and hear from people if there are big issues or complaints, and we'd know where we stand by then. So it will potentially save us from wasted effort, if that's the case. And it clearly is working in some other communities, so. My concerns, I'll throw a couple concerns out there in general. The, when I heard from Dave Menugian, DPW Director, at one of the meetings we had, he jumped right into one of my concerns, which was, as always, costs related to something like this. I think in general, when people put a carrot in front of me, it always sounds nice, but you guys picked up right away the way, everyone jumps for the money, it spreads out. He picked that apart in two seconds and figured out the amount of money and said, "We can't even really, even at the pace at which he's maintaining current intersections." It's helpful, but you can't really count on that being the reason you do something like this. It's a nice reason to jump, but it's not really gonna move us very far. If it gets us moving towards something we really wanted anyways, then it did its job, which is probably the intent of it. So I think, my other, the real question is, how do we keep up with these costs? Because now we have a higher standard when we redo an intersection. We've got to really upgrade it the way we're looking to upgrade it. We've got, anytime we redo a road, for instance, that's not a state road, we've got to bring it up to the standard. So there's clearly cost there. So I would say, in general, what I would not be in supportive, or I think one of the ways we should support this, I should say, is through economic development as a whole. I think not through fees, fees on, let's say, for example, church parking lots, which has been tossed out there. I'm just gonna put it out there, you know where I'm going with that, some of you. I'd say overrides in general, not in support of them. I know it's a political statement, but I think some people think we can just magically go get the money. And you're talking to a lot of people here that, no, that's not the case. So I'm, in general, I think when you want things like this, which ultimately are services for the town, you want a higher quality, a higher standard of living, you have to find a way to pay for them. And one way to pay for them is to cut costs on a town, which you see town management constantly presenting ways to do that. And secondly, you need to find creative ways to take non-producing assets, like such as a landfill, and find a way to bring in two hundred thousand dollars a year from it. So when you have things like this in front of you, this is the kind of thing that you use that money for, and this is how it translates. And if you want, I think, I love the idea of having this. I love the idea of, I think it's dangerous seeing somebody try to bike down Chestnut Street that I live on. My goodness, I fear for their life, like, really. And 126, same thing. But the way we pay for things like that are through these things. It's not raising taxes. We've not successfully even put through overrides, and I'm kind of proud of that. So as far as knowing what my costs are gonna be as a resident. So I just want to point that out, because it all, to me, somebody said holistically, it is holistic, to find a way to increase town revenue responsibly, to pay for things that we want, like this. So, those are my ten cents.
Okay.
So is, if you want me to, from this side, unless you want to keep going, I can...
Well, it sounds like your board is in support of us at least getting the policy moving forward. I would, that's the same of, you know, my board thoughts and...
It's certainly logical, and I don't see, as it stands, if we, obviously, you don't vote on a policy, do you see the policy, so that's fine. I think it makes a lot of sense to move forward with the draft policy. The fact that you're gonna take Littleton's model and apply Ashland to it probably isn't gonna generate a lot of work. It'll break some, but, you know, so that's nice, you're not burying yourself in a whole bunch of work and then, you know, and then everybody tearing apart this policy. But it is just a policy, and there might be some real value in that. The questions I was asking before is looking for weight, and obviously, the goal was to get dollars. You know, this isn't a huge fantasy or money, there's no way, you know, but it is still money. And any money is improvement. The policy might have more value as a policy than as a bylaw, you know, in the other approach, that if you force it and you can't afford it, then it's much harder. So I think drafting the policy, getting the ball going, you know, think long and hard about maybe some language around implementation of a bylaw, but that's long and hard. It certainly makes a ton of sense, and even if we're able to do one or two, that shows improvement. And when people see that, then support comes, and then I think from there, the next steps become easier. So definitely, it makes a lot of sense to continue with drafting a policy, and I would vote in, probably in favor of that policy, depending upon the language, so.
Okay. Steve?
So I guess for me, it has a lot to do with, I think, the type of business that we're, both boards are in, and I think it has to do with the quality of life in our community and how we promote that. And I think adopting or supporting this type of program, regardless of the dollars that are involved, and regardless of the long-term nature of a lot of these projects, I think it's a statement of values, of what we value as a community. And I think it's important that we take that, take this step, support it, do what we can as we can do it, and apply the standards as best we can. I agree with John. I don't think that this is something that, you know, you look at the 126 project as an example, many, many years in production, and we're still many years away from fruition. And I see this in some ways. But I think, you know, when you look at some of the other projects that we've accomplished or are accomplishing in town, I think this could fit in very nicely. So, again, a statement of values.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank members of both boards for coming and listening. As Joel said, and when I heard this, it did two things for me. When it was first started in, I think it was Acton, it was actually the Board of Health that helped start pushing this through, because it was, as Joel said, a health issue, you know, in that if we can get more people walking, we can get more people riding bikes, we can get more people finding other ways of transportation. So by creating this policy to give us complete streets, and again, it's not gonna make every street look like 126 that has a bike path and a sidewalk. You know, for something like Cedar Street, it might be actually having stripes on the side of the road, so people will see that there is gonna be a place for people to walk or ride their bikes, because, you know, and Chestnut Street, I was crazy enough the other day that the loop that I walk, I usually walk a loop that has sidewalks. And I said, you know, I want to walk a different direction. So I walked from my house, and I live on Prospect Street, and I walked on Chestnut Street. And the number of cars that drove by me, and the drivers were like, looking at me going, "You're actually walking on this street." But if we can make our streets more walkable, and, John, I agree, I don't want the policy to cost us more money. I think it's as we're looking at our streets, and I think, you know, the first meeting that we had with Dave Menugian and Selby is that we don't want to increase our costs, we just want to, as we're looking at our streets, as we're repaving them, as we're looking to update our streets, we have a policy in place that will help us look at them to say, okay, if we have to make a change anyway, how can we make that change so that it benefits more members of the community? And also for myself, when I heard that there was potential money available, whether it's five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars, a community like Ashland needs to do everything they can to try and get grant money back and tax dollars back to our community to help us do what we want to do. And because, you know, Chris and MAPC has a policy that we can look at, I don't think it will be a lot of time and energy to draft a policy that we, as two boards, can support and use. And if we can get it done before the first round of funding that goes out, we'll be one of maybe fifteen or twenty communities versus if we wait for a year and then we're one of a hundred communities. So it sounds like from both boards, their support to at least draft the policy. John, if you and I can work with Nat and Selby and Chris, and, you know, we'll try to get something out to everybody, you know, if, you know, depending on how quick we can do it, either by the end of February or early March, to take a look at, at your separate board meetings, we can then open it up for other discussion from the public. But I think if we can, you know, get this done, I think it could be a very positive thing for Ashland, so.
Great.
Comments or questions, and then we can wrap up.
One more question?
Yeah?
Has there been any, any studies as far as the, like, are there any success criterias and any evaluation of those, the level of success where this has been implemented?
By success, what do you mean?
You know, one of the targets here is, you know, from a health standpoint, that, you know, just to get more people walking, more biking, more, you know, where this has been where this has been done, where they've created a complete street. Is it really encouraging, are people really using it more, and is that, you know, 3% more or is it 50% more?
There, from the public health side, there are many, many studies, but they're all slightly flawed, and the reason that they're flawed is it's very difficult to know whether it's a correlation type of thing or a causation, you know, which causes which, do people that like walkable areas move to walkable areas, or is it the fact that the actually building, the walkable, causes people to walk? So there are very few studies, I've seen a couple that do support that, but there's nothing exhaustive. I've seen stronger sort of pre and post related to the economic development, because they actually can say what the, what the sort of various economic measures were before some sort of in intervention and then afterwards. And same thing with the safety, I mean, safety, I think is much clearer that safety has improved.
Okay. Great. If nothing else, we'll move forward, bring something back to our boards. If there's nothing else, I take a motion from the Board of Selectmen to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to adjourn for the planning board.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Great. Thank you very much.
Great evening.
Thank you for watching and, uh, we'll keep you up to date on it.